I'm Dr. Calhoun, I am the founder of the team that is putting together Sarcoxy Nursery. We're keeping the name Sarcoxy Nursery. My wife here, Wendy, my son next to her, Jonathan. And James is my farm hand, farm manager of my own property. He's been with me for about 10 years. I brought him along from Royal Support just about a year ago. So, I'm retired interventional cardiologist. We moved, my wife and I, and my son was born at the time. Was he one yet? So I did my training for cardiology at Sample University Hospital in St. Louis. We were recruited to St. John's Hospital, a job in '91. We moved there and the reason for that position was is so that we could live on a farm. I wanted to be at this stage, my retirement, I wanted to be in a position to live on a farm. We go coil lining, but I wanted to. I retired in 2014, we were kind of getting back into the coil lining thing. My son had gotten involved, was showing me cannabis before that. That is the initiative that I was first put in by the state to try to get medical marijuana to the state. It failed to get enough votes by about 12, so it didn't get on the initiative at that time or the ballot at that time. My son moved to Washington, Oregon, states where they have legal medical cannabis, and he learned to grow medical cannabis there. He came back and the idea of growing hops for beer, which is also a cannabis product, growing hops in a cave with the idea of transitioning into medical marijuana, then it became new. It seemed like a pretty good idea to me, I wasn't really interested in it at the time, but he had a business plan all planned out and put down the paper. I decided to fund it at that time. I thought it would be a good experience for both those, give him an opportunity to work out with us. As he was doing that in Kansas City, I got interested in the medicine of marijuana. As you know, there are all kinds of things that are said about marijuana, some really bad things that aren't true, and some really good things that aren't true. But I got, being a scientist, I got inquisitive, I got curious about, well, what do we really know? What's the science say about medical marijuana? And what can we prove? That's how I kind of got into it. But as he went through in the business of the hops, I got more interested in the business aspect of the medical marijuana and the hops business. That's about when a new approach from zero with the amendment two came into place, or at least came into my life, I got a copy of it. I read it, it made a lot of sense to me. It looked like a really good way to bring medical marijuana to a state. What they did when they put this together is they went to the other states where medical marijuana was legal, and they took what worked and what didn't work, and they put that into amendment two. And not only is it a good, not only is it a good platform to bring medical marijuana to the state, it also provides for a good business model. You can put a good business plan together with the amendment two because you know the rules. The timing is all laid out, the rules for how much you can grow, how many cultivation sites there can be, how many dispensaries there can be. All of that is already stated. If you look in contrast, if you look at Colorado, you can walk into a Colorado office, put down your $25, get a license to grow medical marijuana, and you can go grow as much as you want. And if anybody's reading anything these days, people in Colorado are getting rid of their medical marijuana licenses so they can grow them, because there's more money for farmers than him, than there is in medical marijuana, because of the huge crops they're having with medical marijuana, because of no restrictions in the state of Colorado. So that's how I got involved with medical marijuana. I liked the new approach, my wife and I became very active. I did multiple talks throughout the state to various groups about medicinal benefits of marijuana, and it's not, this talk is not bad. But I will talk a minute a little bit about medical marijuana. So that's a little bit about us. We live here in '91, we love, we love where we live. We have a small farm down there, 335 acres, contiguous acres, we love it. The only thing I do is grow weeds down there, known by the intent. The weeds are for coil. If anybody knows anything about coil, they love weeds. And so, I've tried one cowl one time, and that was last year for four months, and it worked the way it was supposed to, that I had asked, so it won't be doing anything. So people, okay, so the first question is, okay, so if you have a farm, why are you coming to Sarcoxy Nursery to grow medical marijuana? Here's the reason, it's really simple. We were gonna do it in a cave in Kansas City. We were gonna transition into the cave in Kansas City. The reason the cave makes sense is because the temperature fluctuation is smaller and the humidity fluctuations are smaller, so you have less power consumption to get to that sweet spot. You don't have the big change, the big fluctuations in the summer and winter. So we thought that was a good idea, we went into it, hired engineers, after a lot of money, a lot of time, engineers came back and said, hey, you can do that, maybe. Well, the maybe kind of threw me off, I wasn't really crazy enough. And so we started looking at other sites, and the first thing that you need, other than the space, the first thing we need is the power. You need a lot of three-phase power. And our argument was, we don't have as much power as you guys have here. I can't get it to my farm. We don't have three-phase lines, we have to run it up and down for a bit to breathe, I'm going to line off of 43. I can't get, our people cannot give me the power I need to my farm. They have to put up a power line, some power poles, and the giezment is different. They can't give me the giezment. That is the big issue. So then my wife and I would start driving around on the weekends or whatever, and look at power lines and follow power lines down the road. I got the maps from Empire, they would show me where all of their lines are, sometimes I'd get in the airplane, I have an airplane, sometimes I'd get in the plane and fly around and follow these maps and try to see, where can I go with enough power to grow medical marijuana? That's what I wanted to do. We kept moving this way because this is where all the power is. I don't know how you guys got all of this power, but you have more power probably than anybody in the state. You have three-phase power lines running down roads that go nowhere. We were on one of those roads on a Sunday afternoon, getting ready to go home, and my wife says, hey, let's go look at this nursery for a second. I said, yeah, I like the nursery. We're not far, we're just right up here somewhere. Over there somewhere. And, you know, so, okay, let's go look. So we drive up, we see the nursery, we drive in, we start looking around, we look at these plants, we look at these trees, we look at the water power. I mean, it was, it was like love at first sight. We loved it. 20 minutes later, I'm on the phone, Sunday afternoon, about 2:00, 1:00, 2:00. 20 minutes later, I'm on the phone calling real estate. 20 minutes after that, he looks at me, 20 minutes after that, he is showing us the problem. I mean, it was pretty much, in my mind, it was pretty much a dead end. We loved the problem. Not only do we love, so, power line obviously runs right by the road. In addition to the power line running on 37, right under that is natural gas. Next to that, right at that corner, is city water. So we have water, we have full electricity, and we have natural gas. We brought a, so we're looking at a couple of different buildings, but the long as we're talking to some great consultants about building our structures, and one of them came to do a site visit. Some man is from Tulsa, he's gone to school at OSU, he graduated several degrees in horticulture. Excuse me, he's been around the world building these different grow environments and that almost for two years. Anyway, he's got a lot of experience. We bring him to do a quick site visit, and he looks around and goes back to the house to start talking about some details, and he says, that is the most perfect field site I have ever seen in my career. And the guy is world traveler. This is the perfect site for what we want to do. So what we want to do is medicinal cannabis. We want to build buildings to grow medicinal cannabis. What we want to do is leave every tree standing that is standing. We want to go into the interior of that and using those big trees, those big mowers all around it, we want to use that as a natural privacy fence. We want to go into the interior of it, we want to build our facility, and we want to go from there. The facility is going to look similar to this. You can see the highway back there, tall ceilings, we're thinking probably about 30 feet. You can see these open side gates. Our buildings, and most of our, pretty sure we're going to build our part of those buildings. They're not normally, it's, it's a sealed building like this. It's high-tech. You walk through different and various cleaning techniques before you're allowed to go into the grow itself. There's gold survival light that bathes you to kill any bacteria or anything else that you might be contaminating the grow with. So, that's kind of what we want to do, that's kind of what we want to do without marijuana problem. So, one of the things that I heard as a question was, is there, so we're just shifting gears a little bit, and we'll talk about medicinal marijuana now. So I've heard some people say that there is no scientific evidence that medical marijuana works, there's no literature to that. My, mainly my argument is, or my counter to that is, it's federally illegal, so it's impossible one to make the drug to study. You can't get it out of this, University of Mississippi. The only place in the United States where you can get it to study, you can't get it. They just don't make it available. So you can't get the marijuana to do any studies on, and oh, by the way, it's federally illegal, so you can't get any funding to do any research. So there really is not a whole lot of research going on, granted. However, in the United States, the United States government owns patents on medicinal cannabis to treat things such as migraine, irritable bowel, chronic pain, opioid withdrawal, and alcohol withdrawal. The government owns the patents for the use of marijuana for those illnesses. In addition, there are three, nabinol, cetivex, and methadol. Those three medications right there, the first one being 100% THC and a sesame seed oil, you take it in a capsule, that's the first one that was approved for cancer victims because of the loss of appetite and pain from the chemotherapy. But they couldn't really tolerate it because it was pure THC. In order to make this work, you need the CBD and ratios that, that counter the side effects of THC. But another one's cetivex, it's 50/50 THC/CBD, and then there's that the dialys, it's 100% CBD. Now you may have read about this one, or heard about this one lately. This is the latest one to get FDA approval in the United States. These three drugs are approved by the FDA. So remember, the argument that I'm making is, is that there is scientific literature to support the use of medical marijuana. If you say that there is no medical studies that, that show the medical marijuana works, how in the hell did the FDA give these three drug companies approval? No clinical studies, no. We know it works, they know it works. So the medication is taken off of the plant and, and processing. This is the plant, this is the bud, this is the flower. You can see all these little things on the leaves here, the flower, that's this over here, these are called trichomes. The trichomes are captured in these little buds and new wood. And the idea is to take that and process those little buds and get the medicine out of the plant. So let's just talk about what that is, the medicine in the plant. This is one strain of marijuana, and that would be the bud that I was showing you a minute ago. You take that, and you take the compounds out of it in the processing that I showed you, and you end up with the cannabinoids. And this is 70 times, there're, who knows how many? 143 for sure, and probably a lot more in addition to that. But the cannabinoids, all the cannabinoids, we're gonna talk about a couple. This one down here, down here, 7-9 test for hydrocannabinol, that's the one that is, has the psychoactive ingredient, that's the one that gives people the euphoric feeling, that feeling of being high. The other one over here, under the cannabinoid, is a CBD. The methadol, that's the stuff you buy in the store, you walk in the CBD store, and that's the stuff you buy now. Guess what, though? It's, that's a Schedule I drug as well. It's federally illegal. Well, how can I go into the store and buy a federally illegal drug? Because nobody cares. Nobody cares. It works. We all know it works, the science shows that it works. The CDC has come out and said that it works, the NIH has come out and said that it works, the World Health Organization has come out and said that it works. It works. It's still a Schedule I drug, but that has nothing to do with medicine, that's all politics. Surgeon General told them back in the 70s, don't make this a Schedule I drug. It works. Next, you did it anyway. Why? You did it anyway. So the cannabinoids, again, there's 7-9 cannabinoid, there's the methadol, and then there's several others that you just mentioned. I do, as a, as a team, we want to excel in medicinal marijuana. Our, our company wants to be the, we want to deliver the most accurately dosed medical marijuana in the state. That's our goal. We don't want to just go, go and grow a bunch of marijuana. We want to produce an accurately dosed medicinal product. In order to do that, we're gonna have to pose certain strengths that have ratios of the different cannabinoids, and we're gonna have to be able to extract the cannabinoids off of the plant, and then come over here and put them back together in a formulation and a ratio that we find to be beneficial through research, clinical research, observational So that's, that's what we want to do from, roughly from a business standpoint. So let's talk about the medicinal benefits of marijuana quickly. So talk about dosage and overdose. Usually dosage is 20 milligrams, most places, if you go to Colorado, you want to buy a gun or something like that, it's 10 milligrams. Some states require a dosing of 10 milligrams, we'll let you go to the board that. So let's just say that dosage is 10 or 20. What about the OB50? The OB50 is the number that's required to kill people, that's how you overdose on a drug. Opioids and therapy, even when it was not real, real big, and so you get a lot of people using the drug, and they want to try to get some benefit, and they end up killing themselves over here. Well, what about marijuana? In 3,000 years of recorded history of the use of this plant for medicinal purposes, there has never been a reported case of an overdose. Never, none, zilch, zilch, not, none. Why is that? It's simple. The reason you breathe is because it's a reflex, it's a very basic reflex. That reflex is put in the respiratory center of your brain stem. It's protected, bones all around, it's very deep in the process. On the brain stem, you have the new receptors which the opioids adhere to. What THC adheres to and CBD are CD1 and CD2 receptors. There are no CD1 or CD2 receptors on the brain stem. The drug can't keep you asleep, the drug can't kill you. That's why there are no reported cases of an overdose. If you take an opioid, you take enough, and what happens is, you just quit breathing. You're so stoned, you don't care, but you quit breathing, that's how you die of overdose from opioids. So let's talk about opioids. I don't think I have to say anymore about the medicinal benefits of marijuana than this slide right here. This slide right here says, from the Journal of American Medical Association, out of my business, I'm a scientist, and so we did all of our advanced news out of journals. This is it, this is the journal. This is the one that you want to be published in if you're, if you're in medicine. This is where you want to be published. It is extremely difficult to get published at JAMA. If you read it, you can read a lot of crap out there about what happened with marijuana, what it does, what it doesn't do. It really depends on where you get your information, so, you know, how much validity is in that information. If it comes out of JAMA, you can pretty much believe it as goals. JAMA, in April of 2018, this was an online, an online document, opioid restrictions were reduced by 30% in states with medical marijuana or a double-use marijuana. In the journal that I received in the mailbox of JAMA, that number was 6.7. Online, from another avenue of JAMA psychiatry, it was 3. Other studies have also shown 3. So the most conservative was JAMA, it's the hard copy, 6.7. Doesn't matter if you can reduce the number of opioid deaths by offering marijuana to a patient other than the opioids, and there's been no deaths from marijuana. Want to go further? There was another study, there's another study at JAMA this year that shows that opioids are not superior to non-steroidal drugs such as aspirin and Motril. Opioids are not superior to non-steroidal drugs in relieving pain. They don't relieve pain. All they do is make it so, I hurt like hell, but I don't care. That's all the opioids do. You don't care and you hurt so bad. In addition, NIH came out with a statement, and I have these other slides on a different topic. They came out in another statement, the NIH, and said that THC is 20% more effective at relieving pain than aspirin. THC is 20 times more effective in relieving pain than aspirin. Opioids are no more beneficial than aspirins and other non-steroids in relieving pain. People die from opioids, they don't die from marijuana. Doesn't that seem like a good trade-off? It does to me. But you could look at marijuana as an exit drug for opioids. It's also been shown to cut down on alcohol and nicotine use. It's also been shown that marijuana is available to patients in the state, the longer that it's been legal in the state, the greater that drop in opioid deaths is, because people, even if people have it in their house, they have an opioid preparation in their house as medicine, they have medical marijuana in their house as medication, those people are going to go to medical marijuana rather than opioids they've already paid for. If they have the choice. Okay? So that's the reason, I don't think I can go into more science as far as medicinal benefits, but I, as far as I can turn, I don't think I need to. That says it all for me. But let's talk about gateway drugs. So here's a reason.
Just because we're right here, you said 20 times.
THC is 20 times more effective than relieving pain than aspirin.
Is that CBD or is that THC?
THC is 20 times more effective than relieving pain than aspirin.
And CBD is, you're relevant to that particular aspect of medication, correct?
Yeah, so you have two different things, THC and CBD.
You're referring to CBD as a, as an alternative, you're figuring here.
Who knows?
You're looking at THC and CBD.
Correct. Correct. So the difference between him and marijuana is THC content is 0.3. So you, I'll talk about it later, since we talked about the difference between CBD and marijuana, THC. Again, the only difference is, all the cannabinoids are in it, on both of them. The only thing that's not in him and CBD is the 0.3% THC.
I only ask because, as you were talking about the whole process, and what teams can do is to extract the CBD out of that in your piece there. And so that's, that's why I ask about the difference there, not the change that you're going to notice around there.
So our plan is to extract the cannabinoids, here's just five, six of, five of THC and CBD. We intend to, all of those will be available in our strains to some ratio or another, and then we will be pulling them out. So gateway drug, listen, so we have talked about reasons to be in favor of it, and let's talk about some reasons not to be in favor of it and marijuana. One of them I was hearing is a gateway drug, it's a gateway drug. People who use cocaine and heroin are likely to abuse marijuana prior to the use of cocaine? Well, how about the people who use marijuana? Turns out, people who use marijuana are likely to abuse alcohol and nicotine prior to the use of marijuana. National Survey of Recreations. What does that mean? It means that if you use cocaine and heroin, the reason you do that is because you started smoking cigarettes. If that's your logic. It's not true. The question is asked incorrectly in these surveys. The question is, and I have a friend, and I won't tell you that story, but the question on these surveys is, when you go into drug rehab facilities or in prisons, and you give someone a survey, and you ask them, what was the first illegal drug you used? They circle marijuana. That leads to this belief. If you ask the same, on the same survey, what was the first addictive agent you used? They would circle nicotine. So if you didn't call it an illegal drug, you don't get that answer. It's not gateway. The other thing is, is there's a big difference between causation and association. Just because people that use, just because people that use cocaine and heroin also use marijuana, that's an association. There's absolutely no proof that one caused the other. There's no proof. Addiction is another reason. They'll get addicted. So when we think of addiction, we think of the cocaine, we think of the alcohol, the DTs that you get when you're trying to get away from addiction. There is no substance in marijuana. There is however, cannabis use disorder. In JAMA 2015, prevalence of marijuana use disorders in the United States. 10 to 30% of users will develop cannabis use disorder to some degree. The younger you are, 14 or 15 years of age, and you start being a chronic user of marijuana, you're likely to, you're higher than 30%. If you don't start using the medication until you're 23 or 25, the number is somewhere around 4%. It's very low. So the later you start using the medication, the less change you have of developing cannabis use disorder. What is cannabis use disorder? Cannabis use disorder is, you wake up in the morning, you say to yourself, I have to go to work today, I should not smoke marijuana. You go take a shower, you get out of the shower, and you smoke marijuana. You know you shouldn't have done it, but you did it anyway. Now you gotta go to work. Let's make it worse, you might get a drug screen, but you still did it anyway. That's cannabis use disorder. How do you treat cannabis use disorder? Do we lock you up and watch you start salivating and convulsing? You throw the marijuana away. You have a couple of days of irritability, maybe a headache, it's like giving a caffeine, if you're a strong caffeine user like myself, it's, it's, that's what it's like. That's the addiction.
Is medical marijuana tested through a drug screen? Will it show up?
Yes. So, you're talking about blood test, a blood screen, or do you?
Someone would require a blood test.
Yes, and so, and so, well, the catch there is, is that medical marijuana, marijuana is very fat soggy, meaning that when you get it into your body, it wants to get into your fat tissues. Once it gets into your fat tissues, it's very slow coming back out. And that's why if you go to Colorado and you experiment with medical marijuana, and you come back and get a drug test in this state, up to two weeks later, 30 days, you're gonna test positive. And the reason is, is because it went into your fat cells, and now it's coming back out over time. There is no good drug screen to test for the acute use, for the recent use of marijuana. There is no good blood test. All they can say is, yes, you did it somewhere within the last month or so. All they can say is, is yes, you did it somewhere within the last month or so. There's another reason not to be in favor of marijuana. Because we're gonna make it available to the kids and the kids are gonna start using it. Well, in Colorado, when it was legalized in 2014, the use of marijuana in twelve to seventeen-year-olds stayed pretty flat across the United States. However, when it was legalized in Colorado, teen use went down significantly. Why is that? I can't answer that. I guess it's because the kids didn't think it was such a big deal. You know, when I said, "I don't really do something, my parents know it, can't do it." I can't answer it, but there's the numbers. It did go down. National Survey on Drug Use. Let's talk about security. So, what we're thinking about doing with security is, well, first of all, the state will, the state right now is making up, DHSS is making up the rules and regulations to how to implement the new constitutional change that says you can do medical marijuana in the state. You can grow it, you can extract it, and you can sell it. So they're trying to come up with all of those rules. And in those rules, they're gonna have rules on security, different, so for all of those, for those three different types of scenarios, cultivation, extraction, and port dispenser, there's gonna be rules and regulations where you have to adhere to. Cultivation, which is what we're planning on doing in the nursery, cultivation and extraction. We do not plan to have a dispensary in Sarcoxie. We will not have it. I can't tell you that someone else will, will come in here and try to open a dispensary. But it's, it's, we're not. That is not in our business plan. Security, let's talk about security on the property. One of the reasons that we like the property so much is because of the natural fence, the natural privacy barrier that's around. Our plan is to go into the, into the center of that. There's our little barrier, maybe seven acres, maybe put a fence around the whole thing and put our buildings in there. Now, it's probably not gonna be required that we have to put a fence around the whole seven acres. It is going to be required that we have to put the fence around an outdoor road where we grow the plants outside. That's gonna be a very small part of our business. Most of all the road we do will be in a sealed building like this. Not like this, but sealed building. So, so again, with security, if we were growing marijuana in this building and that was our door, we would have to have a camera on the outside of the door, we would have to have a camera on the inside of the door. There would be a key lock on the door, could be finger, uh, finger pad, could be a keychain, could be a lot of different things, could be a coin, could be a lot of different things. You hit that lock to unlock. Then you come in, you sign a law and so forth. Those two cameras are dropping that for you. We think that, you know, we don't think as a business that it's really fair for us to come into town uh, and expect a strapped city, economically strapped city, to supply us with a police force. That just doesn't seem right. In the county, you're not, we wouldn't have any right to expect that from you. And I live in the county, down in, in, in the one, just south of Petro. Uh, I live down there and I know who, and I know what it's like to call the sheriff and have him on the other end of the county. You're on your own. I did that. So it makes sense to us to have a chief, chief of security. That would give us twenty-four, uh, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five security. Part of how we would like to staff that manpower is we would like to hire possibly from the police department here on days off to supplement their income, the working shifts for us. And we would do the same thing, you know, with, with, uh, uh, the sheriff's department. I, I met with Randy Kaiser. Uh, he thought that was a good idea. I did hear in the last meeting, uh, about all of the publicity that Sarcoxie is getting now because of marijuana. That's Randy Kaiser's fault. I went to meet Randy, it's not his fault, I shouldn't say that, it's bad, it was just bad timing. I went to meet Randy and I told him, "Look, this is what, this is who I am, this is what I wanna do, and this is where I wanna do it." And so I met him. Had a great conversation and I presented this idea of, of shifts and so forth to him. I didn't know that the next day was the county commissioners meeting. And Randy reports with the county commissioners, and that there's a reporter always there. This one had to have that happen. Did you? The next day. So that's how Sarcoxie really got in the news. I, I started getting phone calls after that. "You're doing what?" I said, "I started getting phone calls, 'Hey, I had a hundred and eighty-eight neighbors in jobs. Well, let's get together and come over to the market if you'd love to.'" It was just, people were coming out of the woodworks. But that particular news article that day of the county commissioners meeting was really kind of what got this all publicized. And then of course we have the infamous green picture. So that was another, that was another thing. So that's the security. We, we intend to provide security. We don't think it's, it's fair or good business to expect either the city or the county to supply that for us. In addition, we think we can do a better job. So we've taken, uh, a kind of possession of the nursery. We, we mowed it down. What we wanna do is if some of these, I had the last meeting, I had kind of a project manager with us, uh, that, that has worked for, for me for quite some time. He's already started working on some of these buildings. Uh, we had a park so over this building, uh, because it has holes in the ceiling. We wanna stop any further damage from occurring before we can get in there and really start putting a new roof on this until I can figure out the best way to do it. We just at least wanted to stop any rain and snow from getting in there. I looked into the possibility of bringing this in to have a functional status. We just think this property is so cool, it's just not even fun. So here's the D E store over here, here's thirty-seven here. You, we, we have open fields like this all throughout the property. Here's one, this one would be easily opened up. What we're, what we're planning on doing is bringing our power from over here, our cabs from over here, and coming in this area and possibly all the way back in through here to do our road. You're not gonna see me from the road, you're not gonna see me from this road, uh, unless you come through this bean field, you're not gonna see me back there. The building cannot tolerate these trees. We're done. Beautiful, beautiful, just, you know, riding through there on, on a wagon, it's just, man. We love, we, we love the property. So, when it was, when, when the vote happened in November, on November sixth, the clock, the clock started ticking. Effective date was December sixth. That date is not passed, there were lawsuits and is now law. It is the constitution, there will be medical marijuana in the state in the search. They're gonna start accepting money, uh, for your, so there's a non-refundable application fee. You have different levels of application and one non-refundable. Uh, this is here for people like myself, uh, that want to go ahead and put our non-refundable money in for the state. The state, the amendment said, "We're not gonna ask for any money to implement this from the state." In order to write these rules and regulations, we have to have some funds to start getting consultants and other people on DHSS. So in order not to get money from the state, this is here where people can start turning in their money early, that non-refundable early, and fund that early, uh, uh, rulemaking process. Applications for, uh, uh, patients. I'm sorry, I have patients who are, are finalized here. Uh, and so they have to get these out to us, they have to get the applications out to people that want to apply by June fourth. Patients can start applying for, and here they're scored there, medical cards July fourth. So if you went to the doctor now and you got your recommendation, on July fourth, you can take that and your twenty-five dollars and extend it into the state. Those are the right days, I didn't, I'm not saying. Uh, July fourth, you can turn the money in and then you can get your, your medical card back from the state. Uh, out here on August third is when I'm gonna be able, we're gonna be able to start turning in our applications and our fees for, uh, uh, approval. The system is built on merit-based system. You get points for certain things that you do right. Security's a big, you get a lot of good points for doing the security right. You get a lot of good points for having some experience. Uh, it, there's a lot of different things that you get positive points for. And so that's how we're, the sixty licenses in the state. There are only sixty licenses available to grow medical marijuana in the state. We want to. Sir? DHSS, right now DHSS is birthed without tax. What I hope to-
Explain DHSS.
Department of Health and Sanic Services. What I'm hoping, and I'm, what I'm hoping DHSS does is say, "We're gonna farm it out to a third party out of state." The reason I say that is, is what happened in Arkansas is that, when did they pass Arkansas? You remember?
It was twenty sixteen.
When, twenty sixteen? So they approved medical marijuana in twenty sixteen and they still don't have anything right. In fact, it was probably within the last month they figured out maybe how to make it right. What happened was, is they awarded a few licenses, cultivation licenses, I think they only had five available. And they awarded those and one of the guys that didn't get them said, "That ain't fair," and sued. And so it's been hung up in the courts. And so the lawsuit was, is that the state didn't do it right. So what they finally did, the state of Arkansas about a month ago, is they sent the whole mess to a company in Boston and said, "You pay down these five licenses." We can't seem to figure it out.
How did you get to fifty-five in this area?
I, I'll tell you how we got to sixty just a minute ago. I don't know why we got five. In fact, I'll tell you how we got sixty right now. So I was telling you earlier that the way Amendment Two was written was a good idea. They got together and they decided what, what worked in other states, what didn't work in other states. And that's how they came up with the language in Amendment Two. How did they come up to sixty? One of the good things about Amendment Two is, is they went to other states and they looked and they, they found out what percentage of the population will become medical marijuana users in the state. And that number turns out to be about two point three. So about two point three of the youth people in here will become medical marijuana patients. Okay? So it's two point three. How many people will we have in the search? Six million. So let's go back. So we know now, two point three of six million, as many people are gonna be medical marijuana users. So now the next question is, how much does each one of those patients use per year? Now we know how many pounds or whatever that one person's gonna use, those people are gonna use. Now we know how many, now we know what the prop should be to service that many patients. We don't have more than we need, we don't have less than we need. That makes for a really good business model. You can, you can kind of get an idea of what you're doing with that business model. More importantly, it ensures that we don't grow more medical marijuana than medical patients are going to use in the state. There won't be a large surplus of marijuana available for the black market. And it wouldn't make any sense anyway because the medical marijuana in other states is sold cheaper than much you can get on the black market now. So that's how we got to sixty. The way we got to a twenty-four per congressional district, uh, so it's a hundred and twenty-nine dispensaries. Uh, they didn't want all the dispensaries going in the big cities. They wanted to make sure that, that they were fairly distributed throughout the state so the people that live away from our cities have access to the medicine as well as the people in the cities. It only makes sense that if you were, if you were trying to get a dispensary, you would want to put that dispensary in a really high volume place. That just, that's just normal retail. That just makes sense. But in order to keep that from happening, that's why they said a twenty-four per congressional district.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
If, uh, medical marijuana has to be a by prescription? Is by prescription?
No, it's not really by prescription, it's by recommendation. By physician, by licensed physician.
And because it's a people, then there would necessarily be a prescription, is that?
That's why it's not prescription.
Which is also why it can't be prescribed through normal parks.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering why the dispensary versus through parks or distribution currently have-
Just set up a table.
Makes sense.
CBS is expensive. Plus it's cash, it's a sum. CBS isn't set up in cash. CBS is set up, correct?
If you don't think it doesn't take one hour to see what happened, if they aren't having this.
So after we go through all of this, we have our applications turned in. We expect to be approved December thirty-first. That's when we would start construction on the large buildings. Large buildings are extremely expensive. I'm, I'm supremely confident in getting the licenses that I want, but I just can't raise that kind of money. Who knows what's gonna happen? So that's why we won't be building the, the buildings until the thirty-first. However, um, and I did that, I'll make it short right there. However, this morning, this news came out that the federal farm bill, the language in the federal farm bill has been decided on. And the language in the federal farm bill says that sativa, and any part of the plant including the seeds thereof, and altered ribbons, extracts, cannabinoids, isomers, acids, salts, and salts of isomers, which growing or not with a delta nine tetrahydrocannabinol concentration of not more than zero point three percent, so it's not marijuana, it's CDE on a dry waste basis. This means that it will be federally legal to grow him and process it and make CDE. If you use CDE now, you have no idea where it's coming from. None. There's no labeling on it, there's no testing on it, there's, there's nothing on it. So you can get some Chinese CDE that'll make you break out a rash and go to the emergency room. You'd have no idea, and your doctors wouldn't have any idea of why you're breaking out a rash. But turns out, I got Chinese CDE. The reason I'm bringing this up is, is because we, Mo Farm, which is a subsidiary of Sarcoxie Nursery, will be getting in the CDE business quickly. If this, if, so it's not signed, it's not prepped, it's not passed, it goes hopefully before Christmas. President May have to sign it before Christmas, is what I'm hearing now. If that happens, we will be growing him for CDE. We are, personally, we already own an extraction lab set up in our father's garage, my father's garage. We practice extraction right now on the hops that we grow out of the pig in Kansas City. And the reason we do that is to practice, practice, and practice. Now if this becomes available to us, we will continue to practice and grow. Using this particular language, just closer to marijuana. We want to deliver the most actively-dose of medical marijuana in the state. That is our goal. Our goal is not to grow a bunch of weed, man. Our goal is to produce actively dose of medical marijuana and to be, and to be the best in the state at that. So I made a comment earlier in the last session and I said, "We wanna be the star or we wanna be something." I don't know. Someone took offense to the way I said it. What I meant by that is, is in southwest Missouri, we are going, we're gonna be well-known. We all, and we're gonna be well-known because again, we want to be the best at this business of anybody in the state. And in addition to having the best business, the best business model for anybody in the state, we want to deliver the best medication of anybody doing this in the state. Can we, I, yeah, we can do that. Absolutely, we can do that. So let's talk a little bit about marijuana. Just through this slide in here and through- So let's talk a little bit about, I just threw this slide in here and threw one of the ladies off, who I'm trying to explain this to last time. In the state of Nevada in July 2018, they, they increased their taxes by 7.9 million dollars just by the use of marijuana. Now, keep in mind, in Nevada, they have medicinal and recreational also heated on, they got a lot of twists. So that number is bigger than what we expect. In this state, we expect about a million dollars more. 13 million for the year, that's the anticipated revenue, so that's about, about one million per month to the state. And then in addition, because of Amendment 4, in addition to that, there's another Amendment 2, there's another 4% tax added on to standard retail tax that they pay that goes to the state. That 4% is earmarked for the benefits. It has to go to the benefits because the way it's written, it can't go off to the general fund where it can be siphoned back off of road construction or whatever. It has to go to the benefits. Okay, well, let's break, how does it affect our taxes? Our initial building, complex out here, building I was talking about on 31st for next year, when we put our deposit down to start operating materials, the build-out of that building will be $5 million. That's not the total build-out, that's just the first start, that's the first phase. But after year three, which should be the total build-out, we expect to employ somewhere from 58 to 60 people. That brings $2.3 million into the area in wages. And those 58 people that are working on that nursery.
Your average hourly versus your salary making and your average salary?
So the salary, it is people that we have to bring in, project managers, biochemists, uh, marketing, lawyers.
Put the average hourly rate outside of the median and average salary, sir.
Yes, those are two different things. The hourly wage doesn't add anything to it, what is the salary? Two different numbers, we- So that's it. So now I'm gonna answer the questions. One of the questions is gonna be about odor, so let's talk about odor. Odor mitigation. Where this comes into play, where it's all publicity, is in the city areas where this grows happen, uh, around a whole lot in a densely populated area. Uh, I don't think that would be a problem on the farm where it's located. If it was a problem, it would be a problem that you would smell like a scum. At the, at a certain period in life, uh, uh, in the life cycle of the plant, it does produce a very strong odor that smells like a scum. I, I guarantee you, it's not as bad as the chicken shit we put on the fields in the spring. It is no- So, no. It is not, the only, so you'd have to have prevailing east wind to start this, for you to ever smell it. Those are not our prevailing, our prevailing winds are southwest. And so it would be blowing that way. No, sir, I'm gonna get to that. If, if, if I did nothing except build greenhouses and grow marijuana, I don't, and did nothing and just let it exhaust into the atmosphere, I don't think you'd smell it. I think there's enough air exchange between the grow and you. Where, I don't think you're gonna smell it. If you did, it's not like the scum got down the road. But if I did build a building like that, that I ventilated, where that odor got out, that could come to you, if it bothered you, there are mitigation systems that work that could be installed. Why wouldn't I install them upfront? Because I don't think it's gonna be a problem on, because they're very expensive. But wait a minute, we don't even get to that problem. And the reason we don't get to that problem is because what we're planning on doing is building that building I showed you earlier, a huge enclosed building, we're gonna recirculate it here. This, we're not doing it for odor mitigation, we're doing it because of production. It's a state-of-the-art facility that we are designing to build it. There isn't one built yet in the United States the way we're gonna build this building. The odor won't get out. But again, we're not doing it for odor mitigation, we're doing it for a lot of other reasons. But by the way, odor mitigation is a bonus. I guarantee, I guarantee, if for some reason I don't build the building that we wanna build right now and the odor bothers you, I'll fix it. However, I am saying to you now in front of everybody here, if you just get on the odor to, to, to make it look like miserable, it won't have a problem. Right. No, I get it. Again, again, even if it wasn't prevailing south, but I don't, you're not the same. I've asked consultants about this and, and it just doesn't go that far. It is in, it is, it, it gets out, you just don't smell. But again, we're not building that type of building. We are not going to exchange air. It is going to be a closed system. I, I can tell you it's gonna be a closed system with 90% offense.
I have a question about the water tarantulas on that property.
Yes, sir.
Are you the only, um, user of that water?
The water tower doesn't work, the city hasn't used it for years. The city told me tonight they don't want me to even think about looking back at the city water, which I have.
Oh, they don't?
No. They have, they have auxiliary system with their home that they don't need that anymore. And I'm gonna understand that. Uh, you know, you wouldn't want that water from that well going into that water tower.
Well, there are constraints, and you have some of the worst water pressure for a lot of labor, which is a problem.
That's another story. So, uh, as far as odor mitigation, we talked about odor mitigation, we talked about security. Uh, we're not gonna have a dispensary in Sarcoxie.
You don't have a problem?
Yes, our flag should be in, in Joppa. We're looking for a space as we speak, and they can found one that we're gonna use. We wanna get the one in Joppa. Again, we wanna be the shine in darkness southwest Missouri. We intend to have a large enough facility where we can do patient education, we can do physician education, uh, we have a lot of room to stretch out and do a lot of different things.
She said someone else could kind of leave this dispenser in Sarcoxie?
Sure, good, nothing I can do about that. So again, the way it works is you're gonna apply for cultivation licenses, extraction licenses, and dispensary licenses. We intend to get two cultivation licenses, which would fill out our project here. Uh, at least one extraction license, because we have that in order to extract all the medicine and do with it what we want to. We may go for two, I'm not sure, but for sure one. And then we do want to get five dispensaries. Mo Farm hopes to get five dispensary licenses. The big one goes in Joppa, two in Kansas City, one in Springfield. And we haven't decided on the fifth one yet. But there's different things that we're thinking about doing with that. But that's what we intend to do with the five dispensary licenses. Yes, sir?
Um, how many people are you gonna hire for your doctors?
Every one of them we need to get.
I can't find this.
I don't think I can find a biochemist in Sarcoxie, so you're gonna have to give me that. But for, for the, for the, for the jobs that don't require a special training that, you know, that we're gonna need, our first hire classified will be for people of Sarcoxie.
Yeah, just less for the people concerned, like industry is industry, the, um, this kinda goes back from there. From standpoint, uh, city council, is the city interested in a lot of dispensary inside the city? To me, I don't care what we're shipping it out, I just don't care. But I've really had pain clinics in more than one large city where people lined up 50, 60, 70, 80 waiting in the door. And there they act out and have a prescription. Here, we're using recommendations, my dental clinic is approached kind of to a dispensary here and lining out 50, 70 to get their THC dollars. And to me, I can support industry, I can't support dispensary now, just curious what the city's viewpoint on that is.
I, I think honestly, we find it hard for, approach the subject. But to be honest, I think we're a little relieved that there's not gonna be dispensary here. I don't think we're ready personally, I mean-
Well, we have to provide city licenses for that, do we now?
So it's in the constitution now that you can't prevent it?
Yeah, I'm sorry?
It is in the constitution, it's in the state constitution, the city can't prevent it.
Really? Yeah, there's nothing we can do to stop a dispensary from coming in. Um, the state, the, we're, we're classed with the ability to have, which the state says we can do. So, but, you know, we, we just have other ways to go on our 24/7 lease protection. And I'm sure that would be a, I know of any dispensary, whether it is or somebody else's. Would that want to say?
Nobody else is gonna fix your taxi under dispensary.
You're right, you're right. Nobody's gonna fix their taxi. It's not showing up on anybody's business plan, and you're gonna tell you that, you're right. It's not on our business plan, sir. It is not.
No, it should be cut down on a whole lot of infrastructure.
Yes, ma'am, you have a question.
How do you expect the employees from walking out?
With product? So there's seed sale tracking, there's multiple companies that do this seed sale tracking. Uh, once the plant is, is that big, it gets a barcode and it lives with that barcode for the rest of its life as a people. So, so all of this, the leaves aren't any good. It's a visitor that you want the leaves off of the marijuana plant. You don't want the leaves, you want that bud that I showed you. Now, there are some leaves where they're all sweet leaves or something. Surely, so there are some leaves right around the bud, below the, the bud, that do have some of those trichomes, those, that those pictures of, that do have some of that. But the large, uh, big vegetative leaves, whatever they're called, they don't have that. So the quantity, uh, it, it doesn't make any sense to steal. They're not useful, you can't get high on it. There's nothing in it, except chlorophyll. Yes, ma'am?
So is it a plant, like a genetic or modified plant? It's not like the same thing that, uh, which we would be growing in the backyard?
So they're not genetically modified. When you say genetically modified, that, that, that means to me that somebody actually went into the DNA, did some DNA scrubbing, some, it's not like that. It's like when they all, uh, uh, breeding. We're, we're gonna take this plant because it's big and we're gonna take this plant because it produces a lot of oil. And we're gonna cross pollinate it and get this other plant that we hope is tall and fertile. So yes, those strains are cultivated now, I mean, that is big business. That's a science all to itself, is the strain, yes. So as far as the gene modification, you have, no?
I, 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 I guess it's, it's not like some of the rose that I have.
No, what you're seeing in the backyard now is, is industrial hemp that has almost no THC and it's a very tall, spindly plant and grows in the ditches. Missouri used to be the, the, uh, the United States leader in hemp production. Uh, when it used to be able to be used for other industrial uses, uh, where you could use cotton and some other fillers, uh, ropes, et cetera, so on. It has multiple industrial uses, that's reason the house is in, uh, in the Senate. Mr. McConnell was from Kentucky, that's why they're pushing it so hard, is because it is a, a huge agricultural crop that can bring a lot of money to the state. So, there's a big difference between the ditch weed that you see with no THC and the short bushy plants that are loaded. But that comes from breeding. Yes, ma'am, you have a question?
Back to the job part, if some, some of us go back to graduate, can you get a job there?
If what?
If you did graduate school, can you get a job there?
You do what I asked you to do and you gotta get it, you can. Absolutely.
You have a reading spread on employees as far as prior, previous?
So, so, uh, what you say, drug, are we including marijuana? Okay, uh, probably not. In fact, most states that have revised the marijuana and that don't use marijuana are expunging those criminal convictions on, on people. Uh, the prohibition on marijuana is not worth, uh, and, and governments are trying to rectify that as best they can. So marijuana, in fact, if there's nothing, a marijuana condition wouldn't keep you from getting, uh, a license, uh, getting these licenses either.
That's not to say that the whole thing won't be stuck in the background chat, they will.
Yeah, 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 I was just asking about marijuana use and condition. Absolutely.
What is something, as much as anything, is no perimeter else under the main transition system being blocked from?
No, that's not what I said. What, what I said was- What I said was, is that this perimeter here is a visual boundary. And then what we plan on doing, and let's just say it's this field here, this isn't quite big enough for anything, for the full thing. Let's just say that's going to be our outdoor row. Our outdoor row will have a six to eight foot chain link fence all the way around it with cameras. I'm considering if we put the whole row, say, here and back in here, we're thinking about seven acres, is that right, son? Somewhere in that neighborhood, the whole, the whole row, outdoor and indoor? We don't know, is the rules are written? I don't think the rules are gonna, are, are gonna make anyone build a fence around any closed building. So, no, there will be fences around it. There'll be lock doors and fences you won't get in.
A six state foot fence just around the building, that would run around it?
No, no, I'm not building it. Now, what I have thought was a little really cool is to build, oh, you know, kind of like a black, um, old, I don't know. You know, kind of a decorative fence, yeah, down 37, I think that would be cool. It would serve the purpose of, what, what? Yes, sir?
Is that such a land out there as in, and is it in cities?
This is in the county.
All of it is?
Yes.
Part of that is in, on this side, in what is cities, correct? Where the farms and-
So this is south, so this is the south end, the farms and everything will be down here.
The rest of the park's down, it's not in the city? Are you gonna be, you're, you're pulling city water though over there?
We're considering that.
Is it, they're gonna be doing city water or?
Or what we're talking about, yeah. We're considering that, we're also considering the well still works, the best of my knowledge. We're not gonna use anywhere near as much water as the previous owner did. Uh, the estimates I heard from the previous owner, uh, usage is about 8,000 gallons a month. Yeah, no, we're not. In fact, the type of building, I mean, the state of the art building that we're talking about, that building actually has a water reclamation, uh, plant in it. So the systems that we use to get humidity out of the air, right, and we use that for irrigation. Yes?
Will you be growing organic products?
We hope to, yeah, there's a lot of different rules and regulations of what you have to do to say, grow organically. Uh, but no, we will be compliant, uh, state, federal, international. Uh, so if we say organic, no, it will be organic. I just don't know what those hoops are yet, whether it's gonna be growing or not. But it's, but I think maybe where you're going with the question is just fertilize with pesticides. Okay, yeah, uh, so.
So there's a, uh, facilities that we're looking at and there are water reclamation systems. These facilities which utilize water to recapture the dehumidification units and they also capture nutrient. So any excess nutrients that apply to the plants actually recycable back into the system, about 30%. Uh, and we can use those nutrients again. And as far as pesticides and herbicides go, there are actually a lot of organic methods that can be used to prevent, uh, the need for such things. Uh, you mentioned the sanitary procedure that we have to go for, kind of gave you these facilities. And the reason that they're so extensive is to prevent pest repellent and make sure that you don't ever have problems. But there are regulatory minds, the whole long list of, uh, basically defenses, you know, placed to protect the plants, protect people.
So we expand on that concept. So just imagine we have a bunch of plants here, pots. We have a big old piece of equipment attached here and we pour in our fertilizer here, we have a water in it, and we plug in what we want, how much for- what we want, how much fertilizer, phosphate, potassium, whatever. We punch it into the computer, and we tell the computer how often to water each plant. And the computer then waters the plant according to what we've told it to do. So, the runoff is almost non-existent. We don't intend to release anything. And like I said, along those lines, having the natural gas on thirty-seven is a huge benefit because we don't have to use as much electricity. We could use natural gas for a lot of what we needed to use. We also are looking at geothermal. We would like, we would like to leave as small carbon footprint as possible. That is, one of the things in the medical marijuana industry that is not good is all the power consumption to grow marijuana. It's huge. We would like to do something about that. We would like to be able to say that, hey, we don't think that's right, and we're trying to do something other than that. Yes, sir.
Um, when you showed the picture, you said that it won't be greenhouse songs on the picture. It's gonna be absolutely secure, or it can't be broken into.
Well, I never said that.
He said...
I mean, a bulldozer will do that, hello?
And he goes back to the picture and...
Oh, sure, you want a picture of one of them?
One of the greenhouse.
So, this is not a good representation of a greenhouse, as I said, uh, when I showed the picture, because this particular building has size that had been rolled down. Our building won't be like that.
Okay, just same kind of, so it's just a part of that.
Ma'am, there's one thing I'm not meant to.
Because you're hoping nobody saw those windows, all the walls, knowing that the entrance and exits will all be controlled, and they'll have to go through security before you can even get into the building. So, nobody's gonna be able to get there and look in the window and see that or not. They will be able to see anything, because it's all solid, you know, let it solid, now saying it's not concerned. My, my sister has greenhouse, so, but these aren't really, they're called greenhouses?
They're not greenhouse. It turned out to be a high-rise greenhouse. Uh, the definition of a high-rise greenhouse can vary a little bit. Uh, uh, but these are, it's, 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 it's a solid building for the day. And it's got lines on the ceiling where we can regulate the amount of sun that we let in during the day or during what we want. Yes, sir.
What is, I don't think you care about this aspect of it, Ron, but you're gonna look at it. What is in other states having these, uh, putting, what's it do, property value around it?
I took this, I took that slide out. Under, under direct advice, I took that slide out. The answer to the question is, it goes up. Short interlude is, uh, just about any way you look at it, property value is to go up.
Well, I think that was an hour ago. Why is the risk so low?
I agree with that. But that's just, that's what research shows. I mean, everywhere, across the board. I doubt we'll come up with any finding other than that, if you don't look. Yes?
Any town in the industry that has property, these property interests, like, who has, you've got, where you've got shoppers? They're good, they're making good money, and they're spending more money on, on their housing, that's a good, pretty property.
Sure, sure. Yes, ma'am.
Um, you wanna talk about the used local managers?
Oh. So, so, so my wife, my son, John, uh, did I hear you?
Yeah.
What else?
Did you hear the, where you did all the...
James, right. So, the other guy, his name is David, and David's kind of like a project manager. I've used David now for two years, uh, two years. Uh, he's great with the HVAC systems, electricity, plumbing, he does just about everything. Uh, I had him out here. He's the one that has already started repairing the roofs on the other buildings, uh, to try, you know, we're just trying to slow damage down, but he's the one that's done that. But he's been instructed to buy locally as much as he can. Uh, you know, we've got together with the new owner of the hardware store, uh, those two are on a first-name basis now, and that's our intent. For the first utility building that we're gonna build, which isn't the big specialized greenhouse, it's the first utility building that we're gonna build, we hope to use Monet Steel to build that. We want to stay as local as possible.
So, none of the, is none of this gonna start to actually have your license under the sixty?
No, it's already started. Like I said, we've already started repairing some of the buildings, uh...
So, you're possibly, you're really, really thinking you're gonna get that license for sure?
If I don't, I have to go back to work.
Oh, oh, sorry.
So, yeah, I'm pretty sure. I'm pretty damn sure. I, yes, so, so to tell you our timeframe again, to give you the idea of what we're gonna do. So, uh, we actually, I wanted to get the utility building built before now, because now concrete, concrete people don't like work now. Uh, it's not a good idea. You need, you know, thirty-five degrees or greater for five days in a row, and that's gonna get, it'd be almost impossible to have that window of opportunity. We hope to have that done. The reason I hope, the only reason I hope to have that done is because the worry in that, in law that I, the farm bill that I showed you, is because they waited until this morning to put it out. If I had that information two months ago, there'd be a building up already. Okay? We don't really plan on making any money on it. All we wanna do is practice. Practice, practice, practice. We wanna, we wanna be good at growing it, we wanna be good at extracting it, we wanna be good at processing it, and we wanna be good at packaging it. So, thirty-first is, we wanna be the first team off the market. That's our goal. And that's why, and when I say we wanna be the shining star of medical marijuana in Sarcoxy Nursery, that's what I mean by that. I don't think they're gonna bring a lot of attention to the city. I don't think people are gonna come down, you know, with their cameras and stuff to start looking around. That's not what I mean. What I mean is, is in the field of medical marijuana and research, we want both farmers, Sarcoxy Nursery, to be held in extremely high esteem throughout the state. I, I believe that we have put together the strongest team at this point in the state. I think our professional team of lawyers, et cetera, and so on, is the strongest team put together in the state. And I do realize that I am competing against Don Hutter Bush. I'm aware of it. I'm not trying to be grandiose. That's just where we are. Other questions? Really? This is a lot for you to remove from the other question. Somebody's got to have some other harder questions or dissenting opinion on prepared for, I want it. Come on.
What were some of the concerns from the other group that changed?
Foul, foul. No, one of them was, uh, let me believe if I characterize this properly. They were concerned that having a medical marijuana grow in the city of Sarcoxy, people were going to be imported somehow to do damage to the city. That they were afraid that people would come to rob the nursery, and they'd figure out they could get in the nursery, and so they'd rob my neighbors. I just, that, that just seems, I don't know. We talked about it quite, we talked about that quite some time, that was one of them. What was another one?
I think the owner and then the potential crime, they were the two big ones.
Right, right. Yes, sir.
My question is, my product, after you squeeze the CBD oil out of the hemp, you have a process of what you're gonna do with what's left. You got it sold to people who are using, uh, burrless traps and all the other stuff that they make with, with hemp product, and then they help it itself.
Can't answer that question right now, because the state doesn't come up with the rules, regulations on how we use.
Because that could be another industry in it.
Oh, yeah, it'd be an industry, you understand, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I'm really happy to sell it to somebody, get out of there. Absolutely. But you're gonna have to be state licensed. You'll, you'll have to be licensed to handle marijuana in order to do that business. So, yeah, you've got an idea, uh, that's certain. So, one of the big benefits of medical marijuana in the state of Missouri is not actually the product itself. It's the ancillary businesses. It's the security business. It's the fertilizer or whatever. It's the disposal, it's the guy that builds the chain, the fences.
That's why the book is made out of hemp, maybe that's the number.
Well, that's here, yeah, that's, I see, that's wrong.
Yeah, he's like, my product, product, and hemp, or...
I'm sorry, I see, uh, yeah, sure, you're welcome. And you can fix it, so, I don't know.
Yeah, this just happened this morning, so it's hard to develop, you know, I'm always just like, eight bucks for it, so that's always fun to have. A beginning, but you, you know, I don't know whether I need to have a...
Uh, yeah, they test, they taste test for years, and they, they're working.
Well, we're bringing six new employees on now to handle just this issue. So, that's why they need a lot of time, because they have to leave six new employees. So, Don, do you have anything that you would like to add? So, last, someone did ask me last time, what do you think? What do you think?
Thanks, I think a hard question to answer. No, uh, you know, the council's talked about this, and, I mean, we've got a series of proposals. We think it's probably a good deal, especially for the jobs and, uh, just the development. Uh, one of the things I mentioned last meeting is, right now, that's basically, it's a failed nursery. It's been out just interiorly. Uh, the buildings are falling down. That, per property values, in my opinion. This instead is trying to rehab a salvage and make improvements, which is for no other reason than seventy-four acres of something improved. Like, this is gonna help enjoy apartments, so. I think it's a good deal.
Well, as a nurse, and I cannot believe how medical marijuana, and I did the research before we went to vote, I took the form, I was totally used to it, going to vote against it. Started doing some research on medical property and, and the use of medical marijuana on immunobodying for patients. And then I have a friend, I talked to a friend, and now I'm having, who has been on opioids for years and years, and just using some CBD from a reputable farmer, has, and then, oh, opioids, how can you call that? I just think it'd be a very danger to patients in the nursery. I'm excited about what I can do for people in pain.
Well, thanks, but, yeah, I, I see that as a no way. I've got opioids, or I've got marijuana. Kills people, no before the death. Better than reliving. Every, we make that trade every day. I would make that trade. Every day. So, anyway, we're excited, we're excited to be here. We love the property, we think it's so cool. Uh, we're excited about, uh, bringing this, this operation to Sarcoxy. Yes, sir.
What, uh, how much of my revenue stream, do you think that medical marijuana, at least once we meet years, and bring, make, you know, in a few months, it's finished?
To the year, I think?
Yeah. Other than, I mean, I'm trying to job, I mean, as far as the revenue of the company in general.
You want me to introduce my business plan? How do you use my business plan?
Yes, sir. Yes.
No, I'm not gonna do that.
I'm not interested, because it feels like the only benefit Sarcoxy sees is jobs and, and potential processing.
There's capital tax revenue, uh, being outside the city limits, unless it's an extent. It's not, it's not, it's, it's, we have, it's right over there, we don't see...
You'll see the actual property tax that creates, probably, the improvements that they make. And then, yeah, there's some property values that are around, sales are assessed, values are all, too. But it'll, you know, even if it's not inside the city, you know, it has a profound impact on the sort of district, uh, county and everything else. Plus, you know, these jobs, uh, you know, hopefully we'll have locals that...
People that will go to town, they'll go and work.
Yeah, and then over time, too, once everybody gets filed into what your needs are, production wise and hiring wise, you know, it can be a great source of local revenue.
If playoff destiny dropped two point three million dollars in dog business, it seems like there's a thing.
Uh, it's not only just the, the jobs that it, that this might have an incredible area, it's the trickle-down effect. So, when you're looking at, well, we're gonna try to do to use local vendors for large-scale processes like it. Uh, that's gonna be one of the, is new business Sarcoxy businesses. Uh, the, the Chinese restaurant, our employees are gonna have to go eat lunch somewhere. So, the Chinese restaurant, a great pizza, the cakes is good, by the way, we have there. Uh, I mean, every time we come over here, uh, you know, that's gonna be the worst. There's somewhere that has to, there's gonna be more people coming in. So, it's, it's not just, you know, kind of a in-the-box thing, it's gonna trickle down to a lot of different places, you know, for...
No, I mentioned the expert business, side workers, chips, I covered the social media chips. We've already bought one now. She loves them. Maybe, maybe obviously ours today. Yes, ma'am, did you have a question?
Yes, about how many people will have to be, have no skill at all in work.
Uh, I can't really, uh...
You say fifty-eight?
Well, that's, that's total employees, that would include the hire of salary.
But how many, if open without any training, what's...
Or is it on this, my high school teacher?
I'm asking you, what do you say?
Oh, no, she, she answered your question, but I'm referring to a question to my son, because I think he had a better idea than me.
I mean, with no previous experience whatsoever, limited education, I'm saying, between five and ten positions would be available for backchambers, trimmers, that sort of, teenagers. Uh, but there will be positions available for people without experience.
I appreciate that. Because I know every high school dropout has three to four.
Yeah, that's, I got nothing, I got nothing against high school dropouts. Uh, there's late bloomers, who knows? Maybe they can get a good job, decide they wanna be better than that, and go back to school, or get their GED. Uh, I got that problem on my school.
It's also gonna be crowded from your campus to all of them.
Right, they're...
It's likely that people will come from, who are...
Unless they're here in Sarcoxy that I don't know about, there's certainly, you know, people in Sarcoxy who know about it, and if they feel qualified for that job, then they will apply.
Can you explain what kinds of jobs, do any job companies have, explaining what types of positions are available in their facility? Maybe I have, I have...
Uh, like I mentioned, there are a lot of routine positions.
He needs to stay there, so he can hear.
Thanks, Mom. Um, there are routine, routine positions involved with cultivation facility, light trimming. Uh, a lot of eyes-on finance work you go through, you just look for, uh, potential problems, kind of health issues. Those are things that people without training or minimal training can do.
Uh, so will be trained.
And as a follow-up to the, to the lack of training, um, or lack of experience, you know, one of the things that we do now with the Hox Company is we do educational events. Uh, we do public and private educational services. So, from last, well, for most of the year now, we've been going around Kansas City, around Srinco, around, uh, posting events where it'd be educate people in workforce, for example. Uh, I taught a class in advanced citizenry in workforce for over six weeks at the cave site in the fall. And during that time, there were six people who'd never been to a school, they had campus. And by the end, they were ready to, not quite take on a managerial position, but they were certainly ready to take on a lot of responsibilities. One of them is actually running, uh, the cave operation right now, and employing our employees in the future. So, there's a lot of opportunity, once, um, like Tom said, whenever we get it dialed in as far as what people are interested in doing, what kind of education they need, the support to help them get there, uh, there will be careers available to, to local people. And we'll be able to provide enough resources they need to, to get to those careers.
So, in our utility building, all of the extraction department that we have, we're gonna keep talking about the biochemist and so forth. One of the other things that we can do, the packaging, for example. We have to have people that can run machinery, that can take the extraction, the oils that we've created, and put them in these different preparations that we've got, whether it's a bake-in, or whether it's a capsule, or pill, or whatever. And we're trying to use that to do a thing. In addition, now, this isn't part of our early plan, but in addition, edibles are a part of the industry. Uh, brownies, you know, gummies, that sort of stuff. That's really not in the, in the front part of our, our business plan. But we, the design of the utility building will actually have the kitchen. So, you know, we might be hiring baker out of Sarcoxy. I, I can't list all the jobs that will be available, but there will be a couple of them. Yes, sir.
But it's still being filed with legal, what are, what's the risk of employees, of work there?
What is the risk of employees?
At a certain point in the business, I'd be always knew something about the fact of growing marijuana, so, what's the risk of the employee that was handling it?
I guarantee to you, my risk would be one of these.
I don't, I don't, there is, there is a risk if I go to grow marijuana in a basement, and then fight, but he's still a risk.
So, if you grow marijuana, they link without the proper certification, and applications, and so forth, and licenses. Uh, yeah, it's federally illegal, you could be in trouble. If you have the problem, and, and you're state legal, and federally illegal, questioning for this, and this point, you, or they don't care. They can just, that's why you buy C D E, they're, it's still a federal drug. They don't care. And in addition, if it's federally illegal, federally, yes, you're off, it's a medicine, you're not getting anything, and play off that. They don't care. The city of Kansas City, it's a, it's a, they don't trust anybody for marijuana. It's in, it's in their law, they don't do, they don't care. They don't... So, you're talking about the state's rights bill, and that's why I think, uh, the state's rights bill, or our strike, that been tried, it might... What that does is, if you're used to it, they call it coal mineral, and it's a whole thing, and it came back and said, we're not gonna spend any federal money busting people in the states where marijuana is now legal. We're just not gonna do it. Sessions may end, and you famously overrule, we're not following that anymore. They didn't do anything about it, even though we came out and said we're not gonna do it. They still followed it. The only, so what's gonna happen, I think, is that the state's rights bill will pass. And what that does is simply say, from a federal standpoint, in the states that have medical or recreational marijuana, the federal government is not, it, it's no longer federally illegal, so you can demand, I'm gonna prosecute you, you have to issue. We just don't care. That's what I think.
I read that it's only coming up before January.
It might, yes, I doubt, seriously, it might.
It is, I'm sorry. I was looking, I was like, they're saying on the, on the federal side for your concealed carry and all of that, and you lose gun rights.
You don't lose anything. You, you will get drunk.
If you get your part, your...
No, again, theoretically, that is true. Theoretically, if you say you use medical marijuana, or if you get a medical marijuana card, it is on your, on your application for a gun. Have you used marijuana? If you lie on that application, you're in more trouble than if you use marijuana. The federal government doesn't care. Technically, is it, would it be a federal crime? It would be. Again, no one in the federal government, here's where, no one in the federal government is gonna come down and even care. They're not gonna make an issue of it. Why? I come down as federal, as federal prosecutor, I come down and say, I'm gonna take your pistol away from you because you have a medical marijuana card. What do you, you go get a lawyer. You say, hey...
It's state law, law, and...
And it amounts to a state's right issue at the Supreme Court. The federal government does not want that fine thing. They, they're, they're gonna lose it. They're not trusting. They don't care. Prosecutors, state attorneys, Barry Brish, the guy's, I've been around, was talking a lot. He was in the Obama administration, he, he agrees. It ain't gonna happen, we don't care. In fact, it's now a console for one of the governments, uh, trying to get people licenses in the state. No, and, thank you. Any other questions? Thanks, everybody, for coming, I appreciate it, we'll be here next week.